One thing really quick.
Yeah.
There's times where I'm gonna have my head down looking at my screen, so if I don't see your hand, just acknowledge me really quick and we'll take any questions. Thanks.
Okay, so the key metrics that are a part of the dashboard are the Facility Condition Index. So we call that the FCI, and this is an industry standard metric, so it's not unique to Dearborn, but it serves as a benchmark to compare one facility related to another. So it's used in a group of facilities. And what this is, is a deferred, it's a calculation of deferred maintenance and repairs divided by current replacement value. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. We also have what we call an adaptability assessment. And so this is tied to all of that work that we did related to the future visioning of learning for Dearborn. So all of the workshops and the what we heard. So we understand now, we feel like we have a good grasp, but where Dearborn wants to go in terms of education. And so this rating is to identify the difficulty level of renovating the existing building to get there, to support Dearborn's vision of learning. And so some determining factors that we use to rate this were the floor plan, so the building layout, the building materials or structure, and then safety. So the ability to implement a layered security approach. We know and understand how important safety is for your community and your students and staff. And then utilization, so a percentage indicating whether the building's underutilized, right-sized, or overcrowded. And so that is essentially, it's another calculation, so it's enrollment over capacity. So we'll talk about that one more as well.
Question for you on this.
Please, yeah.
The way you're explaining this, I'm viewing this as a living document, and these numbers are gonna be changing.
They will.
Consistently.
Yes.
Like if we do a bunch of work on a building, the Facility Condition Index will change. The adaptability, we might say that we want it to be more adaptable, but the cost might be prohibitive to get it to that position. Does that sound accurate?
The way I would look at the adaptability is that might be something that is a little more fixed in the current state. So what we mean by that is some of the, to convert a floor plan of one of your older buildings that has load-bearing masonry walls into flexible learning environments, it's gonna be much more difficult, more costly. It's, anything's possible, but it's gonna be a higher cost. So we've weighted those buildings as, you know, it's more difficult to convert it. You could, but it's important to, a lot of times when districts do this work, they only look at that FCI of just kinda, you know, the replacing equipment, maintenance, all of that. They don't really look at the adaptability, whether or not, you know, so at the end of the day, does it really support teaching and learning of where you're going as a district? So that's really what that piece does. And so that may change, I guess, if you do some work to actually reconfigure spaces, that number might change. But I think that that piece of it will be kind of one of the determining factors that will help alongside FCI to determine, do we actually wanna renovate this building or should we just replace it and build a new building? So that's kind of a key piece to tie together with the FCI to make sure, because there will be a cost to completely reconfiguring it to make it conducive for teaching and learning for the vision.
Okay, thank you. Trustee McDonald?
If you could just, the slide that you have on the screen there, go back to the previous slide and tell me how that information with the FCI falls in line with this particular screen. That's what I'm having trouble relating.
Yeah, so I'm actually gonna-
This one has each individual school, which is good information, but I'm not sure, I understand where it says high infrastructure needs and stuff. How do the numbers like the one, the one that, how are those all? Just explain it a little better for me.
Yeah, for sure. And there's this whole series of slides too, that'll hopefully break it down a little bit.
Yeah, I looked through all of them, and they're all a component of this one, but I'm just trying to get my hands around this one in particular.
Absolutely. So this is actually the live dashboard that I wanted to show you on the screen. So what this is, is we used a software called Airtable. And basically, this is all the data, this is the database. And so if we look at the FCI score, which I will find, so here is the FCI cumulative score and all. This is one to six. And so here's the percentage value. So you see all of the buildings sorted on the left. And here's the FCI score in a column. And if you hover over this little i, it talks, it tells you more information about how it's calculated. And we can sort it by value if we want, if that's at all helpful. And so basically, this dashboard takes every data point and just organizes it. And so each metric is just input into this software, this dashboard, and sorted. So you can use it as a tool to understand each building individually or how it fits overall into the district.
And as a database, this could be updated. So as trustee Thorpe had mentioned, you know, if work is done, you know, it's, really, it's a framework. So things can be, can change, you can update the data as you go along, and then that may kinda resort the priorities within the database.
Okay, that helps, that's helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So the one that you, the Airtable that you are on, we don't have access to that. That's not in the slideshow, we just have a screenshot of it, correct?
Yep.
Okay, where could we, I guess, where could we find that?
So right now, we're still using it and working on it.
Perfect, okay.
Yep. Yep, and we can talk with the district about that, but it's a lot, as you can see.
Okay, no problem.
But I'm assuming each of these maps then that come up under Dashboard FCI, and then you have the district map and the numbers of the legend, so to speak, for each, is a summary-
It is.
-of what's on the dashboard that you're looking at.
Exactly. And then when we get further along in the deck, you'll see, or in our time together, we'll pull up the interactive map. And what the interactive map is, is it's a graphic representation of the dashboard-
Right.
-that you can play around with. And that's all of these data points.
Perfect.
Yep.
Trustee Barry?
Real quick, so later on, when, you know, the community's watching this-
Yes.
Explain the difference between 25% FCI compared to 48%.
Yep. So that is a perfect segue, thank you so much. So the FCI scores are broken down into different percentages. And this is again all based on industry standards and how that's calculated. And we worked with Stantec, we partnered with them, and they helped put these together for us. And so between 20 and 40% is a designation that is dubbed significant infrastructure needs. And so you can see the various FCI scores on the screen here. So between 0 and 60-plus percent, there's a range from low infrastructure needs all the way up to recommend replace. And now this is a purely facility-conditioned score, so it doesn't take into consideration other layers of educational, you know, adequacy or like from the adaptability standpoint, or enrollment versus capacity. So utilization, it's just based on the Facility Condition Index. And for additional context, all the Facility Condition Index was taken, calculated from the needs assessment that was provided by Plant, Marine, and CREESA in 20, that we received. So all of that information is taken from that data that we received at the beginning of this scope of work.
Was that based on information from the bond in 2019, or was it more recent?
Based on the 2021 review.
2021, okay, thank you.
And so just also to point out, at this moment, or, sorry if I just did, no buildings currently in the portfolio are designated as a five, so as a 60% recommend replace score.
And that's based on right now?
Correct.
Not years into the future?
Correct, that's based on current condition. But Facility Condition Index, that's the comprehensive score, so that looks into the future. It's a projected score. And so if we look at what this tells us over space, so if we wanna look at the map, this is what that looks like. So we find it really helpful, maybe it's because we're just visual people, but to see what this looks like across the district, distributed over the district. So you can see there are a fair amount of yellows, for instance, all across the district. There are, you know, a few greens, the light pink color, and you can see how they span from east to west. And so just to orient everyone to the map as well, you'll see that elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, special programs, et cetera, all have a different shape that represent each one. And then you can see the legend on the right with the color designations. And you'll see each metric will have an associated map along with it as we move through the presentation.
Question for you on this one. At first blush, when you're looking at this, I could say, wow, we've got an awful lot that are yellow.
Yep.
But is this different than what you might see in other districts?
It's a great question. I mean, to be honest, it's just, it's not, it's not super surprising. There are a lot of aging facilities in Dearborn. So it really just depends on, just really depends on the district. I know that's not necessarily a satisfying answer, James, you might have a better one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, every district is different. But this is fairly common with what we've been kinda seeing even around here. I mean, we're currently working with Ann Arbor School District, and they passed a bond a couple of years ago, and we're doing some of the work there. But they had very similar aging facilities that haven't been replaced or touched for, you know, decades even. And so they're having to address their facilities. So in some districts, this is common, that you do have a lot of facilities that are aging and that a lot of work needs to be done. And I think the big takeaway here is that there's definitely a significant need here in Dearborn that is gonna require a significant investment, and it's gonna take time to work through it. But yeah, there's, you know, what the yellow does mean is significant infrastructure needs. And then, so mainly the high numbers, as you can see on here, are significant. And then there's some that are in the high infrastructure needs. And so it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of work. I think the one thing just to remember with this, this is just the data. It doesn't imply what you should do yet. That comes into the kinda the design scenarios that comes next, because it may mean that you rethink how programming can be distributed throughout the district. So it might mean some locations, you actually invest in renovating a school. And in some areas, you may want to create new facilities that serve, sort of kinda multiple neighborhoods or multiple areas. And so those are, that's really how you use this data to then develop design scenarios. And we'll share, as we mentioned, we're working on kind of a spectrum, so you can kinda see kinda the status quo to, if you wanna think more innovatively about how to approach education in the district. And then those are things that could be shared with your community to get their feedback on and see where you land on that spectrum.
Mr. Roy?
One other point, this is just the facility index. It doesn't take into effect the future use of how you wanna use the buildings for curriculum. For example, if you want every building to have air conditioning, you know, like we have in our own household, those numbers are not included because that's not the existing status of the building. So depending on what you wanna do, if you wanna have a more open environment, those costs are not part of the facility index. That's why it gets averaged across many different data points to get a composite score of where we wanna go when we look and plan forward.
Trustee Petlicov?
Just as a, because people are gonna start asking these questions even now, once they see this. This will, when you do the scenarios, come with dollar figures as well, because when people have input, that plays a big role as to what they are willing to invest in-
Yes.
-when they can have a, you know, buffet of selection.
Yes.
Trustee Moser?
Was the age of each building taken into consideration when you're calculating the FCI? Or is that part of different figure?
I don't know that the age specifically, the age is part of the overall, the overall calculation in general. I don't, and the quality, I don't know that the age is a data point. It's more that it factors into how each system is. That the age of life of specific systems is taken into consideration. So for instance, an HVAC system, if it's end of, if it's at the end of its useful life, that data point is taken into consideration.
So for example, you could have an older building, just that was maybe, you know, built in the 1920s, and if you've maintained it and it has good, you know, good working systems, and maybe those have been replaced, it would actually have a higher, a better FCI index. So it's really looking at the, all the equipment, all the stuff inside, you know, the infrastructure of a building. But it does, you know, what we found though is that some of the older buildings have more of a, more of a need. I think there's definitely a correlation there. And it also kinda plays a little bit into the adaptability index as well, because the older buildings, the structure, just how they're built, it's harder to adapt those, to reconfigure spaces into more of the modern learning environments that align more with your vision. Whereas the newer buildings are a little bit easier, they're more steel construction that allows for that adaptability. So it does, in some ways, it does kinda play into it, but it's more of a correlation. It's more tied to just the actual infrastructure and then just, you know, the structure and the plans.
We also found that some buildings that were built, say, in the 50s or 60s, the FCI suffered a little because the quality of the materials wasn't necessarily as high as some of the buildings that were built a little bit older, so, yeah.
Trustee McDonald?
That's been one of my concerns all along, is that the way things were built 100 years ago were built to be stable and sturdy and maintain. And again, in the 50s, and later, the construction materials became less stable, less. Do you see that that trend is getting better? Are current buildings generally built to last or not necessarily?
I would say this, the buildings from the 50s and 60s, the energy codes and the codes were different than they are now. The codes now are much more stringent as far as the, like the thermal envelope and that, that they are much better buildings that are being constructed from that standpoint. I don't think, as far as the, maybe the quality and craftsmanship, it's hard to get what you have from the 1920s. I mean, you have some beautiful buildings that you just can't build buildings like that anymore. But as far as like the, you know, the durability and quality of it, yes, the modern construction is better.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment. Jim, when you were saying FCI versus adaptability, I was looking at a school, one of the oldest buildings, I won't mention the name, but it's like low to normal infrastructure needs, then adaptability, it's very, very challenging. So what you were saying just kinda makes sense for it to-
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why it's really important to look at, or why our work started with the vision, because it's one thing just to use that data to say, oh, this building has a need from just, you know, bringing it, the system's up to date and keeping it safe, warm, and dry is what we say. But if you really want to make an investment into the future, you wanna make sure that really it functions well for your purpose, which is education for this, you know, for this community. And so that's why it's important to do that early work, to understand the vision, and then to use that as part of this framework of making good decisions, that you can't forget about that, that piece of it.
Okay. So the next metric is the adaptability assessment. So just to make sure we're on the same page with what that means, again, it's this idea of identifying that difficulty level of renovating the existing building to support the vision for the future of learning, just as James was mentioning and as we were discussing. So we have these three scores, we have three difficult to adapt. So buildings that have floor plans or structural systems, that would be prohibitively difficult to reconfigure to the variety of spaces that we want. Number two, challenging to adapt, which is pretty much what it says. And then number one, easy to adapt. And so again, a map that shows what that looks like across the district. So we have 12 buildings that are more difficult to adapt, three that are challenging, and then 14 that are easy to adapt. So that's more on one side or the other of the spectrum, as opposed to the FCI that was concentrated more in the middle.
And I might point out that two of the challenging to adapt are newer buildings, but it happened to be the design, I'm assuming, of the way, the layout of it. But they're two of our more recent bond builds from the 2000s here. So it doesn't always mean the age of the building-
No.
-is what's going to complicate these numbers.
Yep.
Yep.
So utilization, our next metric. So again, this is enrollment over capacity, and we'll spend a little bit of time here. So we have the idea of enrollment, which is the enrollment numbers. And we worked closely with Matt Cropper and Cropper GIS, and they conducted a utilization, or I'm sorry, a demographic study that included enrollment projections for the next 10 years. And so we used those along with the existing enrollment numbers from this school year for this work. And then, and then capacity. And that was based on current capacity numbers, and then also capacity as we would calculate it for the future based on what we would want for future spaces for Dearborn. And so we have three scores again, so the idea of a building being overcrowded, above 85% utilization, a building that's underutilized, so there's actually extra space, and then a building that's right-sized. And so this is the current state of Dearborn as a district. So you can see, again, 13 buildings are overcrowded at the moment, 12 are right-sized, and then four are underutilized.
Couple of questions on this one.
Yeah.
The enrollment numbers that are used, how do they align with numbers that we usually use? Because the name that you gave is not one that I'm familiar that we've used before in our projections.
So the current enrollment numbers should match the fall count that we use. We got those from the district.
I meant the future numbers.
The future numbers, our numbers, is this a question for us or for?
I think it's more for our district.
Great.
Because what was the name of the group that you said you used?
Cropper, Cropper GIS.
That one doesn't ring a bell for me as ones we've used before, so.
That is correct. It's not a, it's not a company that has been adapted by the state of Michigan to be able to use for projections. But when the fielding came in, that was the company they had as part of their bid spec to look at it. We did have Mr. Misher look at it to make sure it made sense. Again, any 30-year study is not going to obviously withhold. So we don't do that long of a search even ourselves, but we had to do something to kinda use as a tool to kinda look forward. They still use the same criteria, birth rate, you know, current enrollment, you know, step progression. So they use a lot of the things that we normally do, but that's not a company we have used for in the past.
But the methodology and everything would align with what we've used in the past.
Correct. I specifically made sure that they had a conversation with Mr. Misher, so he would be comfortable and understand it. And a lot of the terms and the processes were the same.
And we've used three different groups in the past-
Right.
-to make sure that our data is reliable.
The other question, and this is more specific to the high schools. The high schools will have students coming and going anytime during the day to go to off-site schools. So are we assuming if all the students were in the building at once, that's the number we're assuming versus the actual number that might be there? Yes, okay.
Yeah, we haven't had explicit conversations about that as they would pertain to the future for scenarios. But at the moment, for what you see on the screen and the existing conditions, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So just to dig into capacity a little bit more, what you see on the screen are two diagrams. So on the left, you see given capacity. And so just to make sure we're on the same page with how we're calculating capacity, you see a pretty traditional classroom environment, which represents a lot of what we see today at the schools in Dearborn. And this is just to honor how capacity is currently calculated, which is by teaching stations, and that is a state-mandated calculation. And so these are numbers that we did receive from Dearborn, and that's how we're using, what we're using to calculate capacity for prioritization specifically within the dashboard and using it as a tool in terms of determining that metric moving forward. When we look at capacity to determine scope, we're thinking about the vision for the future and what that could look like. And so, you know, we're not married to this for every school, but how can we increase the idea of flexibility? We know that capacity and enrollment numbers aren't necessarily going to stay static. And so how can we absorb enrollment fluctuations as they happen? So this flexible learning environment is a variety of space types that we talked a lot about when we were here in the fall. And so using best practices and square footage per student numbers for elementary, middle, and high school is how we're calculating capacity for scope moving forward. So if we were to propose a new building, or an addition, or a renovation, we would use a different number moving forward. There's also a great variety or a great range of current capacity and current utilization numbers and metrics. If you see on the left, we have elementary, middle, and high school listed, and it's everywhere from 85 to 195. And so in order to think about equity moving forward in terms of square footage per student, we can think about that as we plan for the future and scope. So those are just some of the reasons why we're thinking about capacity in this new light.
Trustee Petlicov?
With the capacity and the new capacity in flexible learning environments, our schools, we're a landlocked community. We don't have any vacant land anywhere. Some schools have available property still, many do not.
Yep.
How does that factor into any of these decisions moving forward with any of your scenarios? Because we don't have a lot of flexibility with our property.
Yeah, we understand that, and we, so we don't have scenarios completely worked out yet. We wanna honor where we are. But from what we've learned and what we'll see with current enrollment and then the enrollment trends, is we feel pretty good about it. Overall numbers suggest that Dearborn's not growing within the next 10 years. So we feel okay about where you are. We've also looked at each site specifically in terms of what are the opportunities, where there might be additions that we would suggest if we went on a school-by-school basis, and we feel okay about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So just looking again at the map where we are in terms of current enrollment, again, this is a lot of information to take in, but we just wanted to put it here to be able to see it on the map and give you time and space to look at that when you can. And then this is maybe the more interesting slide, so this is future enrollment. So this would be 10 years out. So you can see in red where there's enrollment increase at a school, and in green when there's an enrollment decrease. So now this is not related to capacity, this is just from a purely enrollment perspective. And then this is that demographic study, the overall enrollment arc district-wide, so K to 12, that I just flashed on the screen. So you can see now, we're up close to 20,200, and then 10-year, there's a dip, and then it starts to slowly climb, climb back up. And, you know, best practices that we understand in terms of enrollment projections, you know, they're not, to Tom's earlier point, every 30 years or even every 10 years. They're a little bit more frequent than that, or they can be triggered by major events, et cetera. So we would never expect that you would go, you know, 30 years without doing another study, right? And, you know, to the earlier point too, this is meant to be a working tool and something that would be revisited.
Trustee Watts?
So looking at this one, it says the enrollment for K through 12, does it not include preschoolers?
Oh, no, this is, I mean, this is just a, oh, no, yeah, it does not, it does not include preschoolers. The study is K to 12, correct. Yeah.
Trustee McDonald?
We see the trend going that perhaps we'll have preschoolers as part of public education included. So have you looked at that as being part of the possibility that we may have to accommodate our preschoolers as well and have someplace to put them and figure out how we're going to give them a valuable education as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. We talked at length about that, so you'll actually see in the dashboard and on the map, there- So you'll actually see in the, in the dashboard and in, on the map, there, there's a line item for each school. It shows how many GSRP students are at each individual school. In terms of projections, typically, as I understand it, it hasn't been included in, in this, in the projections moving towards the future. So if that's something that the district wanted to include, that's something that can be talked about at the district level.
Okay.
We had a discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. We had a discussion about this very topic because it's all tentative based on the governor's budget.
Okay.
But they're talking, she's talking of implementing universal preschool in Michigan by 2027. So it's a phase-in model, so we don't know where it's going to end up. It's got to go, but we, you know, it's got to go through the process, but that's what's in her plan. So we, just so you have a general idea of the numbers, I believe we estimated, we estimated the numbers, and I think we said about 400, GSRP, is it 400 right now approximately? And we estimated that if we, you know, again, we can't predict. I know that, you know, you can go five years out, but you predict exactly in 2027. But we were estimating about 800 to thousands with our team when we looked at what would be possible if it was universal. Even though that's not solid yet from the governor or the state.
Yep, that's great.
When you say that's what's possible, that's what's possible for us to handle or that's what we'll possibly have?
That's what we would possibly have because we also believe that, you know, you would have a lot of students that maybe would be on the private school route that, hey, now you've got preschool and we want to bring them back to the public. So there'd be in it, there's an opportunity in it as well.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Also, part of the demographic study report, it does include trend, birth rate trends, et cetera. And so projections of school-aged kids and, and younger. So I would imagine all of that information can be deduced. It just, it just adds to that and that's, that's included in this study.
And I would think that's something we can work together to look at more of an accurate data than the prediction we just, or the estimate that we just gave.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
So just another piece of information that's included in the demographic study. So one of the four questions that James spoke to at the beginning that frames our study, how do we provide equitable access to opportunities for all Dearborn public school students looking forward to how we might start organizing and analyzing the data? This is just a student density analysis map. And so what this map tells us is where students are coming from that are attending Henry Ford Early College. So, you know, again, we encourage you to flip through this study. It just tells us a wealth, it gives a wealth of information. And so it's just interesting to see the concentration in the Northeast and that's where those students, those students are coming from. So just a main, that's our, our main takeaway from this map and thinking through, you know, what opportunities we might be able to provide to students in the future. Historic significance, we know that this is something that's really important for Dearborn. And again, this balance of tradition and innovation through the master planning process. So thinking about each building and how we might look at each building moving forward, factors including building age, architectural value and association with historic persons or events. All of those factors or parameters set actually by the Michigan History Center. So thinking about each one of those and then, you know, even more importantly, which, what each facility and what each school culture means to your community. And so that's a little less of a hard data point as it is a, a community subjective data point. But it's something that we've started to ask community members as we've engaged, engaged people while we've been here. And we feel like that can, that's only the beginning of the conversation, right? So we would continue that conversation. We imagine that you would continue that conversation as well. And, you know, part of that conversation is really what could be. Thinking about how we might reimagine Dearborn school buildings in a way that invites community access to benefit, benefit from the building itself. You know, really thinking kind of up here before we narrow in on what that could be. We've seen communities across the country and across the world repurpose buildings to be amazing assets to the community where they provide different functions to more than just a small subset of, of students, but to a whole community. And so not, not saying that that would necessarily happen here, but if a building isn't necessarily suited to provide the same function for, that, or that it currently does, right? If it's hard to adapt to what we want it to be for the future of learning at Dearborn, you know, could it be a community center? Could it be a gym? Could it be an apartment building? I don't know, but we, we just wanted to start really planting some, some seeds or giving some examples of wonderful, wonderful buildings around the country that have been, and around the world that have done similar things. So what does all of this mean? So in terms of scope, how can we meet teaching and learning needs and provide adequate capacity for facilities? So again, you know, just framing this within the next 30 years, we're really talking about this long-term facility master planning, this facility master plan. So, you know, we have, we have two options as we see them in terms of what the data is going to tell us. And that's really replacing a facility or renovating it because we know each facility needs, needs some level of work. And so we, we have designated really half and half. So right now we have, you know, 15 buildings under the replace category and 16 buildings under the renovate category. And what does that mean? So replace could mean demolish and rebuilding, rebuild on the existing site. Or if we don't feel like it's, or if we feel like it's inappropriate to demolish a building, you know, we could repurpose it for a non-school function and build new on a new site. So we would keep the school as the school, but find a new home for it. Or we would keep the school and renovate it and that just might come at a different cost. So like James said earlier, anything's possible. It just has a different price tag potentially to make sure that it's aligned educationally with where you want to go.
Trustee Petlicoff.
A question when we come into this, because 30 years out, you know, if we're looking for a bond now, we can't plan on having that money exist until 30 years when we decide what, what we do next.
Yep.
And that 30 years from now, we're going to say, okay, this, this is what's going to happen. It would require more financing. So how realistic is it to use a, this 30? I know it was asked for and, and we're trying to, I, I just want to grasp my head around how I communicate this when it comes to telling people, well, yeah, we want to go out for a bond for this amount. But 30 years from now, they're going to have heard this school is supposed to be gone by then. And, and what, what are we using this money for? What are we planning on they're going to be looking at? Because most bonds last, what, 20, 30 years? So if we go out for a bond, say next year, it's going to have a shelf life of a, you know, of repayment. And in that timeframe, are we then going to be going back and saying, you know, okay, now here's the next phase?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's, that's a great question. And so I think what that speaks to is, is prioritization and how we might start phasing, looking at phasing the work. Because what, what we see is, is a need to do that, right? So whether, and this is just suggestive at the moment, but whether or not it's, you know, the first 10 years and 10 to 20 and 20 to 30, you'll, what we imagine is, you know, what a master plan is, is really scope and timeline. And so the timeline is really important. And there might be, you know, a bucket of buildings that we feel like have significant needs because that's what the data tells us. And that's great, so we know that. And that might be, you know, potentially what the bond addresses at, you know, at the outset. And then, then we might need to reassess what the needs are at the next junction. And that might be the strategy. But this next phase of building out the scenarios will help hone in on the details and understand what that really looks like. What I just said is, is a, a scenario, but it might not be the scenario, if that makes sense. So there's really these two, there's two aspects or these two points, this kind of scope and prioritization and how they work together.
The difficulty is when you communicate it with people, they kind of hear one thing, but they don't really understand the full. So you say, okay, this building needs, has this many needs, we're going to bond for it. But potentially 15 years down the road, we may decide, you know, and they'll say, well, we've just invested a certain dollar figure in to keeping it safe, clean, whatever. And now you're going to tell us, we're going to pay for a new building or a replacement or something. So you understand what, the messaging is going to be difficult. And I know we don't have any scenarios yet to present.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that when it comes to that point, we can explain it sufficiently so that people understand. Because that, that's always been the problem with any bonds is where's my textile going?
Absolutely. Yep, that makes a lot of sense. I think being able to communicate and understand the process is as important, if not more important, than what you're trying to communicate in terms of product.